Good evening and welcome to the October 9, 2018 San Bruno City Council meeting. First, we want to thank the San Bruno Garden Club for providing the floral arrangements. Madam City Clerk, if you would take role.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. If I could ask our Police Chief, Ed Barberini, to lead us in the pledge, please.
We have several speaker cards for public comment this evening.
For items not on the agenda?
For items not on the agenda and for items on the consent calendar. The first speaker is Paul Albrighton.
Is Paul here?
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I believe that Mr. Albrighton is here for the item on the consent calendar.
Okay, these are for items that are not on the agenda. Not on the agenda or consent. But we have no speaker cards. Is there anybody that may have wanted to speak on an item that's not on the agenda that didn't get to turn that card in? Announcements and presentations, there are none. Now we'll move into consent, please.
For consent, all items are considered routine or implement an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Now, we have some cards on consent.
We do. The first speaker for item 5H is Paul Albrighton.
Well, it's right, the second time. Paul Albrighton, outside Council for Verizon Marilis. Good evening. Mayor Medina, members of the Council, thank you for hearing this for a brief moment. As you know, we were at the Verizon Marilis hearing a couple of weeks ago when our facility was denied and the resolution is up tonight as item 5H. We were a little surprised at Verizon Marilis, that the site was denied due to aesthetics. We explained at the time that the height of our antenna was based on GO-95 and the requirement that the antenna be seven feet above power lines. But we, in fact, had been working for nearly a year with staff on different designs to try and come up with something that would be acceptable. It was acceptable, it was recommended by staff, and it was also recommended by the Planning Commission. And so, we didn't present other designs that were to you because we thought that they were approved and that we were headed towards that approval. But I wanted to make sure that you knew that there are other designs available and particularly that address the resolution where it says that we said that we would prefer to have antennas between 28 and 35 feet. And for that, I'd like to turn your attention to the materials that we sent to you by email, and I think are in front of you in the dais, and essentially quickly go through three designs that we would like you to know are available to address aesthetic concerns. The first takes the four-foot antenna and reduces it to two feet. It's still the same telephone pole, but reduces the overall height to 47 feet. We've also introduced a new radio that just became available this month. It's very small, it's 18 inches by 13 inches by 11 inches, about half a foot shorter than the previous radio, and it's dual-frequency. So, we're able to actually put in one radio instead of two.
I'm sorry, sir, if you could just pause for a minute.
Just one second.
I'd like to yield to the City Attorney.
Oh, yes.
Hold that thought. So, if the City Council is interested in approving or enacting on the rest of the items on the consent calendar, they can do that, and then pull this one for separate discussion.
So, we'd be requesting that it be pulled. I can defer my comments.
So, if you're coming up, let's request, if you're asking for an item to be pulled from consent, what that item is, i.e., is it A, B, C, D, E? And then, we can take them, approve the rest, and then go back to those, okay?
So, I'm done for now.
Okay. So, 7H is what you're asking about? I mean, 5H. It used to be 7 in the old days. Under consent, H. Was there anybody else that wanted to discuss or pull? Pull, meaning it will be discussed separate from consent? Any other speaker cards that would identify? I'm sorry, Mr. Medina, did you? Morning.
Pulling 5E.
Any other items from Council? Okay, I, we've been requested to pull E and H. Is there a motion and action on the rest?
(Inaudible).
Second.
Melissa, I'll let you figure out who is who. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now, we're going to go to the first item, which is E. Melissa, if you could read that, and then, Mr. Medina.
Item 5E, "Approve City of San Bruno Response Letter to the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report Titled 'Soaring City Pension Costs: Time for Hard Choices.'"
So, the reason why I pulled this is because I'm not sure if everybody knows the severity of this problem that's going to be coming up, and that's dealing with our pension costs. So, it was on consent. I know most people don't spend too much time looking at our agendas, but we're going to have to spend some, a large amount of time to try to figure this out. The costs are going up substantially. In the next seven years, I believe, our pension costs are going to double. And I believe, in this report, it calls out for a number of different things that cities can do, but probably one of the biggest things is to make some very difficult choices. You either increase your revenues, or you cut back on your costs. There's other things that are possible that are detailed in this report, and if I did contact our city manager and to let him know that I was pulling this, and I have a better understanding that there are going to be more discussions on how we intend to take care of this problem, but knowing the serious nature of the cost that this is going to take is something that I want the public to be aware of, so that when we come and start talking about it months from now, you're going to remember that we did bring this up at this point. So, that's the reason why I wanted to bring this up.
Motion, action on the item, Mark? To approve?
Sure.
Go ahead and make the motion.
I made the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second and to approve item E under consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. The next item that was asked is item H. Melissa.
Item 5H, "Adopt Resolution Granting an Appeal of the Planning Commission's Decision to Approve a Conditional Use Permit (UP 17-025) for Installation of a New Wireless Antenna on an Existing Utility Pole Located at 123 Elm Avenue."
Thank you. And obviously, the gentleman did start. And we have how many speakers on this item that you believe, Melissa?
We have seven other speaker cards.
So, we've had two hearings on this. So, for those speakers, you'll have two minutes, and we can, please, call a few of them up so we can keep the rotation moving.
Elaney Tripsa. One moment.
Sir, wait till they're called, please, by the City Clerk. Thank you.
Okay, so, after conferring with the City Attorney, we'll allow Mr. Albrighton to finish his statements. He still has some time left.
Absolutely. Thank you.
My apologies that the protocol has me coming up to the podium three times. Paul Albrighton, outside Council for Verizon, was really nearly concluded with my remarks. We've provided you with three alternate designs. The second design has a sidearm antenna. Under GO-95, the antenna has to be mounted two feet away from the utility pole, but you'll see, it doesn't increase the height of the utility pole at all. It uses exactly the same utility pole and mounts the antenna to the side. Again, this would be with the smaller 13 by 11, single-radio unit. And then, finally, I wanted to show you a design that has been approved by the City of Napa, and that's the third design. And that's a standalone pole, all by itself, a single, slim pole with an antenna on top. You've expressed an interest in possibly that kind of design. This is at a slightly different location, 148 Elm, because it's not where an existing utility pole would be. So, we would ask that you consider these designs. I don't expect you to approve one of these designs tonight, but we think Verizon Marilis very much wants to provide service to San Bruno, and we'd like to continue the dialogue, either in front of you or back before the Planning Commission. And I very much thank you for your time this evening, and sorry for the repetitive appearances.
It's fine, thank you. And just for the speakers, the City Clerk, once you're up, there are lights. Once it gets to yellow, you have, what, 30 seconds? And then, once it goes red, I am going to, at this point, last time, I was trying to be gracious, but I am going to be consistent, I'm going to ask you to stop. Go ahead, Melissa.
Elaney Tripsa.
My name is Elaney Tripsa. I reside on 152 Acacia Avenue. I was coming here to say thank you today, but I gather that we need to have a further discussion since there may be a resubmitment. I want the appeal to be ratified, and I don't believe that it will be sufficient just allowing Verizon to change its thought and just modify it a little bit in terms of the height. There's more at stake here because the 5G actually, going forward, it's going to be working on a 60 gigahertz, and that's an oxygen-based molecule, and that will destroy our trees, and we will be depleting of the oxygen. Our current Wi-Fi is on a 2.4 gigahertz, so we are talking exponentially, and it's water-based, much, much more dangerous going into the oxygen molecule that it's 60 gigahertz. So, I object in taking a view and looking in a different design, because here, we're talking more about just the design, we're talking about the trees, we're talking about more than just the aesthetics. We are objecting, so I'm not going to utilize all of my time, but I really need for all of you to stay to our course and understand that it's more than just the height here and aesthetics. We are talking about more our trees, because it's going to go on oxygen molecule, not the water that is now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Melissa, can you please call up a couple of folks so we can keep the line, keep it going?
Leslie Emle, followed by Rhonda Sims.
May I begin, Mayor Medina and Councilmembers, for being so understanding of our discussions on the 25th of September? We do not want these units, any of the kind of units, in our neighborhoods, and we are in keeping with a great number of other cities, as well as even coming onboard lately is Seattle, Oregon, Portland, Oregon, New York City. Everybody is objecting to this, and it's been approved, and if you want to look at an alternative location outside of our little neighborhoods, that would be, you know, we welcome progress, but not in our neighborhoods. And as far as Elm Street is concerned, it is the narrowest street of all the streets in our neighborhood, and the sidewalk out in front of 123, in fact, all up and down that street, is only about 48 inches. So, if you put anything into the easement, a box or another extension that's closer to the ground level or closer to eye level, it's only going to intrude into our sidewalks and our traffic patterns. We made ourselves very clear. You were very generous to hear us out and very generous to vote that these not be placed in our neighborhoods, and we hope that you'll continue to hold ground and stay the steady course. And that's what all of the over 150 to 200 people wanted you to do last time we were here with you on the 25th. So, I want to thank you in advance.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Council. My name is Rhonda, and I also want the decision to stay, to say no. An additional design doesn't change the original decision to say no. The addition of an optional pole, independent of an existing pole, just expands the footprint, which is against what our original decision was. And I feel that as a united force, as a united neighborhood, that San Bruno is in a position to say no, and I agree with the previous speaker, the option to go into another area outside of our neighborhoods, I'm ready to review that and see the details, but I do not want the towers over my head while I'm sleeping at my home. Thank you.
Stacy Tolentino, followed by Jesus Diaz.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and City Councilmembers. I want to personally thank each of you for voting to repeal the cell tower installation on Elm Street at the September 25 City Council meeting. I also wanted to remind all of you that none of the San Bruno citizens in attendance at that meeting, as well as many others not in attendance that evening, have changed their minds. We do not want cell towers on Elm Street or in any residential neighborhoods in San Bruno. It's come to my awareness today that Verizon is still trying to push for cell towers in our San Bruno neighborhoods, even after all of you made it clear that you were against the cell towers as well. Please, tell Verizon that no means no. Don't be swayed by their proposals and ideas. We San Bruno citizens are relying on you, our mayor and city council members, to have transparency, honesty, and integrity. And by that, I mean, we're relying on our elected officials to act on our best interests. You gave us your word that there would be no cell towers on Elm, so be honest. Stick to your decision. Do the right thing when no one is looking. That's called integrity. Don't have a change of heart based on new proposals that Verizon may be giving you. Do the right thing and say no to cell towers in San Bruno neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesus Diaz, followed by Zedane Milli.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jesus Diaz. I'm a grandpa. I have six young grandchildren, from one years old to nine, and I just want to thank you for your decision on 9/25 when we turned down Verizon. As you know, last time I spoke, I've been with the telecommunication company for 33 years, and so, I know a little bit about what goes on inside, and it's not always, they're not always straight and narrow and honest. So, you know, beware what they're trying to pull on you. As I mentioned my last time I spoke, I came down with an unknown mass in the middle of my head, and I had an operation, I believe it was in 2006. Thank God, it was, it wasn't, that's why I'm still here talking with you. But I contributed to perhaps all the cell towers I went on and cell sites I put up and worked in server rooms, and so, I was around a lot of radiation frequencies, EMF, and there's not enough guidance, there's not enough tests done yet to determine if this new technology is really safe for us as human beings. Oh, you know, so, please stick by your guns, and you turn down Verizon, continue doing that until we are made aware of true testing, because, you know, whoever controls the data controls the results. So, I just want to thank everyone in San Bruno for sticking up. You know, we're a small town, but we're a powerful giant in terms of heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Zedane Milli, followed by Julia Larson.
Okay, so, hi, I'm Zedane Milli. I'm a senior at Cappuccino High School, and then, this is...
(Inaudible).
Okay, so, based on your decision last meeting, in which you denied Verizon from coming into San Bruno with these cell towers, I'd like to say thank you for supporting San Bruno and its citizens. It means a lot, and it shows how much you truly care about a community. I hope you follow through with your decision and continue to deny Verizon. Taking back your decision now just shows your lack of strength compared to Verizon, and you can't allow this to happen. We don't want these cell towers, whether it's a different color, different length, different width, period. We don't want cell towers. Thank you.
And I don't care if it's pink, blue, or purple. Please, don't put them.
Thank you both. Next speaker, please.
Julia Larson.
Thank you very much for inviting us to this meeting this evening, and thank you so much for your September 25 decision backing those people in San Bruno who live and work and spend their lives here. It's very important that we, that we know how important it is to have a council that we can come and speak to and exchange information with, and they will hear us. So, I thank you for your original decision. I have to say that I don't even understand why Verizon has come here this evening. You gentlemen and ladies made it perfectly clear as to where things stood. Now, yes, perhaps they thought a change in design would make a difference, as that was indicated. However, location, location, location is what's at stake here. We do not question the fact that these may be needed in the city, not in the neighborhoods, regardless of appearance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of the speaker cards. So, we'll be coming back to Council. Just for clarification, this is specifically in regards to 123 Elm, so I don't want misgivings that this is about the whole city. This is in regards to the appeal that was submitted. I do want to say that we did receive, I received, I'll speak for myself, an email at 11-something today in regards to some that was discussed here. And to me, honestly, I don't know that it changes my mind or not. I don't, staff doesn't have adequate time in which to go over this and look at this. I'm surprised with that late hour that you folks were able to get here so quickly. So, in my mind, what we have before us is a resolution to grant the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. So, what is the Council's action? Mark, please.
So, I agree. Based on the information that we were provided, on the application that was provided, I will continue with supporting the appeal. This does give us some, an interesting future. The legal basis for denying the application, or, I'm sorry, for approving the appeal, was the aesthetics, and that's what we could legally do. I can look every single one in this room in the eye and say, honestly, I don't know about the health effects, I'm concerned about them, but I cannot use the health effects as part of my decision. Now, I'm going to ask our City Attorney to pretty much confirm that, because that has been the ongoing thing that we are specifically not allowed to use in our decision. City Attorney, can you?
That's correct.
Right. So, what we have in front of us, I've spoken enough about it, I hear our colleagues about it. Verizon could go ahead and turn another application in. They probably will, and we'll deal with that when we get it. So, those are my comments.
Any further comments or action by Council in regards to the last item on consent? Is there a motion to approve or not?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion made in second to approve on consent, item H. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. All right, next, we will be moving on to conduct of business.
Item 6A, "Appoint Citizens to Fill Vacancies on Commissions, Boards, and Committees." On September 25, 2018, the City Council held a special meeting where they interviewed incumbents and new applicants for expiring terms and vacancies on various committees, boards, and commissions. Before you tonight, you have a list of all of those committees, boards, and commissions that applicants applied for, and I will go through one by one to take votes on each of these for appointment.
Through the Chair.
Please, Michael.
Would it be possible to expedite this? And normally, we've done in the past, this is the first time we've actually had people that were already seated reapply and be appointed. I'm wondering if we could expedite it by just granting all of the people that have accepted to come back to just approving them and extending their term?
Yes, in fact, the Mayor and I had that discussion previously. I was going to suggest that it, like, for instance, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, there's three expiring terms and three applicants who are all incumbents. And so, I would recommend one motion and a second to just reappoint those, unless one of you feels that you don't want to have one of them.
So, then, do we want to go with Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee?
So, for Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the incumbents are David Nigel, Cecile Riberozzo, and William Gus Sinks. If you would like to reappoint them, we can just make a motion.
I'll move that we reappoint them.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same for Citizens Crime Prevention Committee, three expiring terms. The incumbents who reapplied were Rhonda Boone, Deanna Robinson, and Robert Rieckel.
I move that we reappoint the incumbents.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Community Preparedness Committee, we have two expiring terms. The incumbents are Ron Lapitas and Janet Lewis.
I move that we extend the terms of the two incumbents.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, for Culture and Arts Commission, we do have one new applicant who applied. We have four expiring terms and one vacancy, which is actually perfect, because we have four incumbents who reapplied and the one new member. So, we have Jean George, an incumbent, Janet Monahan, incumbent, Judith Puccini, incumbent, Melody Tobin, incumbent, and Melissa Rolfe, new applicant.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the terms of the incumbents.
Second.
Motion made in second to extend the terms of the incumbents on Culture and Arts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
For clarification, does that also include the new applicant?
I'd like to handle the new applicant separately.
Okay, got it.
That's okay.
Absolutely.
And since we have one applicant for one vacancy, I'll make a motion to appoint Melissa Rolfe to the commission.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to appoint Melissa to Culture and Arts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? Next.
Parks and Recreation Commission, we have five expiring terms. However, we did not receive any applications for the youth representative position that is currently being advertised at the local high schools. For now, though, we have four incumbents who did reapply. That's Chris Gonzalez, Lori Greenberg, David Nigel, and Mike Palmer.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the terms of the incumbents.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it.
Personnel Board, one expiring term. The incumbent is Ed Comerford.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the term of Ed Comerford.
Second.
Motion made in second to continue the term for Ed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Planning Commission?
For the Planning Commission, we have four expiring terms. Two of those terms are currently vacant. So, we have two incumbents who have reapplied. That's Rick Beazotti and Linda Mason, and then, two new applicants who have applied, Constantino Anazinos and Matthew Sum.
Why don't we go ahead and take incumbents first?
Okay. Through the Chair, I would like to make a motion to reappoint the two incumbents.
That's Rick and Linda for reappointment.
Second.
And there's a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we have two vacancies, we have two persons. Again, I was talking to City Clerk, too. We don't have to appoint all, we can continue to search or appoint, so we have latitude here.
And through the Chair, I would, I would like to request that we extend the open period on the two other positions to see if we can get more applicants, and I'd like more time also to review the application packet for those, since it is a little more involved than the other applicants, so if...
Thoughts from my colleagues? Our colleagues?
I agree with that. Sorry. I agree. Okay. I'll support.
Mr. Medina?
Sure.
Okay. So, we'll continue to advertise for those two vacancies on the Planning Commission.
Okay. Okay.
Next, Traffic and Safety.
For Traffic Safety and Parking Committee, we have two expiring terms, but we do have three applications. Two are from incumbents, Jessica Barnes Lopez and John Giuseppini, and a new application from William Cactus.
Through the chair?
Please.
Mr. Cactus had a very impressive background, but we've also had some long and dedicated service from Jessica and John, so I'm going to move that we reappoint them, the two incumbents.
Second.
There's been a motion made in second to reappoint Jessica and John to Traffic and Safety. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, thank you.
Item 6B, receive update on planning study for the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street Caltrain grade separation project and provide direction on Scott Street closure.
Do I take this thing away? Yeah. Just pause for, just for a second. Everybody's being polite. I was going to say, you're certainly welcome to go if you'd like.
Thanks for being here.
Unless you really like trains. It's going to be talking about trains.
Thank you for being courteous.
Thank you. See you, buddy.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, thank you for pausing for a moment. Yes, staff?
Hi, Honorable Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a update on the Caltrans grade separation project. No formal action is requested from council tonight, but it is a significant project that is in the planning stages in our community, so staff wanted to provide council with the full presentation on where the project is to date and talk about some of the key decisions that are going to need to be made over the next few months. And so we have Jimmy Tan, the city's Public Works Director, and Michael Cato, an Associate Civil Engineer with our Public Works Department, to give you that presentation tonight.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. My name is Mike Cato, engineer from the Department of Public Works. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the planning study for the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street Caltrain grade separation project. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief background on the project and talk a little bit about the planning, the project development team that is working on the planning study. I'll also give you an update on what the team has done so far, and then we'll be available to answer any questions you may have at the end. There are other members from the project development team here tonight to help answer the question, answer questions you may have at the end. I'll introduce them to you when we get to the end of the presentation. So I'd like to start just by talking about some of the terms that are important that we understand as we talk about this project. And the first is what an at-grade crossing is. So currently, Scott Street is an at-grade crossing. What that means is the road and the train tracks are at the same elevation, and so when a train approaches the crossing, the gates come down and cars on the road have to stop and wait for the train to pass. A grade-separated crossing is when the road and the train tracks are at different elevations. So as you can see on that slide, for example, that lower image has the trains passing over the cars. San Bruno Avenue here in the city of San Bruno is an example of a grade-separated crossing. So the benefits of a grade separation. The main benefits, of course, derive from the fact that the trains and the cars no longer have to cross each other at the same elevation. This means roadway traffic is no longer delayed by passing trains. It also means that we can get safety improvements because the train traffic and the roadway traffic are separated from each other physically. Another benefit is that grade-separated crossings tend to make it easier to establish a quiet zone. A quiet zone is an area where the trains don't have to sound their horns when they pass. Train traffic is expected to increase up and down the Peninsula Corridor. Caltrain has plans to increase their service from 92 trains per day to 114 per day by the year 2022. And on top of that, in the future, we are expecting High Speed Rail to also be sharing that rail corridor. So as the train traffic increases, we would expect that all the benefits that we can gain from a grade separation, you know, would have more value. So grade separations are typically considered a benefit for the roadway traffic, more so than they are considered a benefit for the trains. For this reason, grade separation projects are typically initiated by the local agencies and not by Caltrain. So in September of 2013, the city of San Bruno and the city of South San Francisco joined together to initiate this particular grade separation project. They jointly submitted a grant application to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority to acquire the funds to complete the planning study that we're working on right now. At that time, it's also important to note that San Bruno, in the application, stated that we are interested in having a grade separation at Scott Street, but we also wanted to make sure that this crossing remained open to vehicles. So on April 20th of 2016, San Bruno entered an agreement with the San Mateo County Transportation Authority and the city of South San Francisco and the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board, also known as JPB. JPB is the governing board for Caltrain. The agreement was to complete the planning study to evaluate options for creating grade separated crossings at South Linden Avenue in South San Francisco and at Scott Street in San Bruno. The project development team to complete that study was formed in January of 2018. Staff from Public Works has been representing the city on that team, and the other members of the team include staff from the city of South San Francisco, some people from Caltrain, and also some consultants who were hired by JPB. Apex Strategies is one of the consultants, and they are helping with the public outreach, and AECOM is helping with the technical expertise. The planning study is funded by the San Mateo, by San Mateo County through a Measure A grant, and no funding has been secured for any work beyond the completion of the planning study at this time. The project timeline is something like this. The preliminary design and alternatives, which is what we're working on now, essentially the planning study, is supposed to take two years upon receipt of the funding. After that, we would move to environmental documentation. That's expected to take three years after the completion of the preliminary design work. And then would come right away in design work. Those can run concurrently and are expected to last about three years after completion of the environmental documents. And then once funding is acquired for the construction, that construction is expected to last five years. This is a aerial photo of the Scott Street Crossing. It is oriented a little oddly. North is to the left. There is a reason for that, which I will explain to you shortly, but north is to the left on this, on this map. Scott Street is a road highlighted in yellow. The train tracks are what's highlighted in green. So Scott Street is roughly oriented east-west, and it passes through the Fifth Edition Neighborhood, which is that area down there at the bottom of the map. And it also connects to San Mateo Avenue east of the tracks. That's it up there. That's San Mateo Avenue. This is a ground view photo of Scott Street, of Scott Street Crossing. This is looking across the crossing from east to west. So that's what it looks like today. And so this is another map of the project. This shows the complete extents of the project, and this map is also oriented with north to the left. That's why I did the other one the same way, so we don't get lost between the two. The magenta line on this map, that kind of zig, zigs through the map, that thing right there, that's the city limits between the city of South San Francisco and the city of San Bruno. South San Francisco is to the left of that line. San Bruno is to the right. The two crossings that we're talking about are the two gray boxes. Scott Street is the one that's towards the right edge. South Linden is the one that's towards the middle. There, and there. Those two crossings are about 1,850 feet apart. There are various geometric constraints affecting the design of the project that we've indicated on the map. Those are, there is a rail crossover section between the two crossings. A rail crossover section is where the train can move between the northbound and the southbound tracks. There are some rules about what the tracks can do physically during the crossover, so those do apply some constraints to the design of the grade separation. And then, obviously, the, whatever the project does, we need to tie into the existing tracks at some point on either side of the project, and there are some constraints about how we do that. Over to the left of this, you can see the blue line that's labeled with Coma Creek. And towards the right edge, it's not really labeled, but there is a, the San Bruno Caltrain Station is right at the right edge of the map. Those are two existing structures that we don't want to have to rebuild any part of it, so we need to tie into those existing, into those existing structures. That limits how far, you know, the tracks going up and down can go. And then there's another constraint, which is I-380. That thing. And I-380, obviously, the tracks go under it right now, and there's a certain vertical clearance we have to keep, so that also puts some constraints on what the tracks can do as we try to do the grade separation project. When you put all of those constraints together, along with the proximity of the two crossings, the designs of the two start to affect each other, and so it just makes sense for this to sort of be looked at together, and hence the joint project that we've entered into with South San Francisco. So I'm going to start talking about what the team has actually been working on. Initially, there were six alternatives that were proposed, but two of them were eliminated fairly early on, so they're not shown on the slide. The two that were eliminated are options where the roadway would stay at its current elevation, and the tracks would go either over or under the roadways. Those two options are not physically possible, given the constraints that we were talking about on the previous slide. So they've been thrown out. That leaves us with four remaining alternatives for the team to look at. Those alternatives are, alternative one, what we're calling a hybrid track raise and roadway lower. This would be where the track goes up a little bit and the road goes down a little bit, and between the two moving, we get the clearance required. Alternative two is also a hybrid, but it's where the road goes up and the train goes down a little bit. Alternative three is where the train will actually remain at its current elevation and the road goes under it. And alternative four is where the train would remain at its current elevation and the road will go over it. So as we're looking at these alternatives, one of the things that came out had to do with what happens when the road starts to move up and down. So at the top of this slide, you can imagine that's an at-grade crossing where the road, the train, the properties are all at relatively the same elevation. Those yellow trapezoids are the driveways, and it all works out nicely when it's all at the same elevation. At the bottom, we start talking about lowering the road. In this particular example, the gray line is the road. You can see that further away from the crossing, that house on the left, the driveway connection doesn't change all that much. It's probably possible to modify the driveway and maintain a property connection to the road. But for the house on the right, you can see how the roadway starts to drop pretty significantly below the level of the property, and when that happens, it may not be possible to maintain the driveway connections. And so this became, obviously, a concern for the team as we were talking about grade separations at Scott. So this is a map that shows what one of the alternatives might look like if we did a grade separation at Scott Street and kept it open to cars. This is for alternative one, which is the hybrid where the tracks go up and the road goes down. Those purple highlighted areas are the roadways, and that's Scott Street. The tracks are in green, running up and down the middle. The purple highlighted areas of the road are the areas that would, where the road would have to start moving up or down, in this case, down. And the blue shaded properties are properties that would likely be affected by that movement of the roadway. In this particular case, we think this would likely be the best scenario in terms of the least amount of properties impacted. We think it's going to be on the order of 37 properties affected, with about 26 of those being residential properties in the Fifth Edition Neighborhood. The worst-case scenario doesn't look a whole lot worse than this. The number of properties affected climbs up maybe to about 42, and the residential properties in the Fifth Edition goes up by maybe one to 27. But it, the extents of the effects do get further out. This is a similar map, just to show you what happens at South Linden. Again, this is for the same alternative, and this also turns out to probably be the best alternative for South Linden as well, in terms of leading to the least amount of impacts. The properties around South Linden are, they're all commercial, so they don't have to deal with impacts to residential properties at that location. So while we were talking about these property impacts, we also had to start then thinking about, well, are there other ways that we could deal with Scott Street? And so there are three options that we can, talked about with relation to Scott Street, and that is that Scott Street could be grade separated and remain open to vehicles, and that's the map that I just showed you, so we're talking about having some property impacts as the road moves up or down. Another possibility could be that Scott Street would be grade separated but closed to vehicles, but we could provide a pedestrian bicycle crossing instead of, well, we could provide a pedestrian bicycle crossing. And then the third option is also the possibility that Scott Street could just remain an at-grade crossing. In other words, we don't have a grade separation there. So I'm going to talk a little bit about each of those possibilities. So if we do a grade separation at Scott Street and it remains open to vehicles, the main pro for this, of course, is that we gain those benefits of having a grade separation, which would be less disruption to traffic, possibly improve safety, maybe a better chance to get a quiet zone. Of course, the cons are what we were just talking about, which is we might have some impacts to the properties nearby the crossing. The second option, where we grade separate Scott but close it to vehicles, the pros for this are we can gain benefits of grade separation for the pedestrians and the bicyclists, and the properties near the crossing would not be affected by changes to the roadway. The con to this is we lose our vehicle connection across the crossing. Last one is where Scott Street would remain an at-grade crossing. In this case, the pros are that, obviously, the crossing remains open to vehicles, and we don't have property impacts around the crossing. The cons are, we haven't done a grade separation, so we get none of those benefits that would be associated with that. I would note that while we lose those, the benefits of the grade separation, there is the possibility that we could possibly gain some of the safety, some safety enhancements, and maybe a chance at a quiet zone if we were to improve the gate system at the crossing. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. So just expounding a little bit more on the possibility of Scott remaining an at-grade crossing. So in the original application, one of the things that was pointed out from August 5th, August 5th of 2003 to August 5th of 2013, there were six collisions at this crossing that involved trains and vehicles or trains and pedestrians. Oddly enough, since then, well, at least since 2014, 2015, 2016, there were no additional collisions at that crossing. So, but those first 10 years that were part of the application indicate, you know, there may be some advantage to enhancing safety at this crossing. Again, it may be possible to improve the gate system instead of doing a grade separation. But grade separations do provide the highest level of safety and would also give us a better chance at getting a quiet zone. And another thing to keep in mind is that we are expecting increased train traffic, and so all of the things that happen, the potential conflicts, you know, between roadway traffic and trains, will only get worse. Few more things to consider, increase, that increased train traffic will also mean more disruptions to the roadway traffic. And as, we are working on this now, you know, we have an opportunity to be part of a joint project with the city of South San Francisco. You know, if we were to decide at this time to simply keep it as an at-grade crossing, we could lose some of the benefits of that. It could become harder for us to find funding. It could limit our ability, well, it could limit our design choices, should we go through with this in the future. with this in the future. And it's also true that whatever choices we make, you know, also will affect what South San Francisco does at their crossing at South Linden Avenue. And also, if, you know, we separate the two projects, cumulatively, that could make things worse in terms of construction costs and construction impacts. You know, building them separately would mean two different construction projects there. That could potentially mean, you know, when you build these things, you got to do a shoe fly, which is essentially the temporary track that goes past. Might have to do that twice if we do it separately. So just some things to think about in terms of how we make our decision regarding what happens at Scott Street. So let's circle back a little bit, again, to the four alternatives. This is what the team was really focusing on. As the team went through its work, we focused on, we tried to focus on alternatives that would not lead us into the property impacts. So we talked about the same four alternatives, but in terms of closing Scott Street and having a pedestrian and bicycle crossing at that location. And that's what we were talking about when we went to the communities. But, so let's just quickly go through that. Alternative 1, at South Linden on the top, would have the trains going up a little, the road going down. And at Scott Street, which is the bottom half of this slide, no cars would go through, and we would have a pedestrian and bicycle underpass. Alternative 2 is a hybrid where the road goes up and the track goes down. So at South Linden, that's what happens. At Scott Street, we would close it to vehicles. And we could actually have either a pedestrian bike overpass or an underpass. This particular slide is showing it with an overpass. Alternative 3 would be where the train stays at grade and the road goes down. So at South Linden, that's what happens. And at Scott, again, we're closing to vehicle traffic, and we could have either a pedestrian and bike overpass or underpass. And the last option, where the track remains at grade and the train goes over it at South Linden, and at Scott Street, no cars, and either a pedestrian or bicycle overpass or These are just some photos, examples of pedestrian underpasses, from the top left and working clockwise. That is Amsterdam Central Station Tunnel, a tunnel on Park Avenue in Lombardo, Illinois. Lower right is F Street in San Carlos, and that lower left is Euclid Avenue, right here in San Bruno. Some photos of pedestrian overpasses. The top left and working clockwise, again, that's Arroyo Avenue, Permanente Creek in Mountain View, University Avenue and I-80 in Berkeley, Stevens Creek Trail in Mountain View, and Ringwood Avenue in Menlo Park. So I've been covering the technical part of what the team's been doing. There's also a community engagement component to what the team has been working on. This is just a graphic that illustrates the schedule for the community engagement plan. Includes several community meetings, as well as several city council briefings. This is perhaps a little bit easier way to understand the schedule. On August 16th, we had the first community meeting. October 9th, tonight, San Bruno is giving our first city council briefing. We have another community meeting planned for late November, early December of 2018 that is still to be determined as far as the date. And then, in January of 2019, we will come back to provide another briefing for council. It's thought that that could possibly take the form of a study session for council to really get into the technical details as much as you'd like. And then, in April of 2019, we're expecting to have our third community meeting, and it's at that meeting that we want to really focus on selecting a preferred alternative for the project. And then, in May of 2019, the two cities would be going back to our respective councils to seek approval for the preferred alternative. So just a little bit of information about what happened at the first community meeting. It was held, as I said, on August 16th. It was held at the South San Francisco Conference Center. There were four San Bruno residents in attendance. There was a presentation given about the project. The four alternatives were discussed, and at that meeting, in all cases, we were mostly talking about Scott Street being closed to vehicles. There was a question-and-answer period, and we were able to solicit and receive feedback from several of the residents who were there. And the feedback from the residents, at least as it pertained to Scott Street, mostly, the residents did not seem overly concerned about the idea that Scott Street might close to vehicles. Their biggest interest was actually in that whatever we build, that it be safe and clean. And there was one resident who preferred lowering the tracks as opposed to raising it. He felt that this would have less visual and noise impacts than an elevated track. And so, overall, we walked away from that meeting, you know, with the idea that the residents had a preference for a pedestrian and bicycle overpass at Scott Street. So that kind of wraps up the update of what the team has been doing up to this date. So thank you for your attention. As Jovan mentioned, we don't really have, you know, there's no action required by council tonight. We are interested, however, in any feedback council may want to give, particularly on the three options of what might happen at Scott Street. And again, that being grade separation at Scott Street with a pedestrian bike crossing but no vehicles, grade separation at Scott Street with the cars able to go through but, you know, probable impacts to the properties, or the possibility that Scott Street could simply remain an at-grade crossing. And so, there are several people from the project team here. There's, from ACOM, we've got Peter Di Stefano and Milet Litzinger. And from Caltrain, Daniel Kraus and Lori Lowe. And just opened up for you to discuss and have any questions, answer any questions you may have.
Just on the August 16th meeting, I attended that. And I think what I did get from those that were in attendance was the underpass. If it were B for pedestrian, that that was a concern. It was a concern because at night, not knowing what's going on, the safety element, people utilizing it for sleeping or other things. That's something that did come up. I think also what came up is that word "affected." I brought it up there, and I'll bring it up here. Affected, I think, needs to be defined of what that means. And I think once some of the residents that were there understood what that meant, it was also a concern to them. Because now, a grade set might seem like a great idea, no pun intended, but there's a consequence. An affected means loss of home. That's what it means. Eminent domain. That's the reality. So I think that was something that they were potentially, that that is a possibility, depending on what version, what plan. But I don't think that they were really there at that moment, understanding that. There was a map that was provided, so it was very clear, and you did a good job explaining that. Thank you, you did. But I think that was also something that maybe is not known on a bigger scale. So that was just some of my feedback that I received from the residents there on the 16th. Other direction, comments, questions from council? Michael?
Go ahead.
Michael, then Laura.
Thank you. So when we met individually before to discuss this, I suggested that maybe we look at the traffic patterns. I just wanted to understand a little bit better about exactly how many cars are going across there on a daily basis, and I'm wondering if there's still a plan to do that. And the other thing I thought about was how, if we do close the street, how it might impact response time for public safety if we have to go around to get to certain areas. So I think those two pieces of data would be really important. When I saw this before and then looking at it now, and I still think that the best alternative is to just close it to cars, it's definitely the most efficient way to do it. As the mayor stated, I can't see, I mean, definitely, safety is number one, but if there's a choice between having that safety by taking away people's homes or by taking away traffic, I think it's a pretty easy decision, but I do want to know what that potential impact could be.
So I'll start by at least partially addressing your question about the emergency vehicles. We have reached out to the police and the fire. I did receive a response from fire saying that they did not think this closing Scott Street would impact their response time to the area very much. Seems they mostly try to avoid actually using that crossing because of the potential that they could be delayed by a passing train. So they tend to use the grade separation at San Bruno to get, you know, if they need to get to the other side of the tracks for that area. I'm not sure about the police, but I think the chief, no? Okay, well, so maybe we don't have information about that just yet. As far as the traffic information, so we have some data from previous studies that tell us how many cars, you know, cross. And ACOM did produce sort of a high-level traffic study for that. Their conclusion was that there would be some, obviously, there's going to be some diversion of traffic, some of that would end up at the, you know, at the San Bruno Avenue intersections that, on either side of the Caltrain crossing there. And if, I'm trying to remember now, the conclusion was essentially, there would be a slight effect on the intersection, possibly to the point, during the peak hours, they operate at LOSC and would possibly degrade to D. But their overall conclusion was that, you know, it wasn't going to be a significant My personal warning about that is, it was a very high-level analysis. And I would personally still prefer that we get some additional analysis, especially related to what the queuing at the intersection will look like. There's not a lot of storage under the train station there where the road goes under the tracks. And we do have some issues with queuing already, as it is, and it would be a concern of mine if we, you know, put more cars through there. But at the moment, there are no plans to do any additional traffic analysis as part of this planning the team's work. I see that, I don't know if Peter or Milet wants to add anything with respect to that?
You walked all the way over there. You got to talk now.
Yeah, I was dying. Couldn't you see me? No, I brought some information with me. Hi, I'm Milet Litzinger, and I'm the project manager for ACOM. And currently, right now, it is true, we haven't done a detailed traffic analysis, and that's not currently part of our scope, and trying to keep within the budget that the funding required, that was one of the things that kind of got put on the side for that. But we did, there was a lot of available traffic information from Caltrain's 2014 electrification project. So we looked at some of the volumes there and the level of service analysis that was part of that study. And just to give you a sense of volumes, probably Scott Street, the average daily traffic is probably roughly around a third of what it is at Linden or at San Bruno. And the available information in that report also showed that in 2020, which is kind of our existing condition right now, that the level of service at both Linden Avenue was a level of service A or B, and San Bruno was operating at a level of service C. So that does indicate that there is some capacity for, if the traffic from Scott Street, which is roughly around somewhere between 1,500 and 1,700 cars, that's westbound and eastbound, or eastbound and westbound, that there is some capacity there that those intersections would, could take. And particularly, if you grade separate Linden Avenue as part of the project, there would be additional capacity there, too. So there is some room. We would have to do detailed analysis to verify that and to make certain of that, but the indications are that it is a possibility.
Did you have anything to add? Okay. Yeah, please run.
You mentioned A, B, and C. Could you put that in terms that would be more pertinent to general quality of community?
Yeah, sorry. So the level of service is, and normally, we do that in delay seconds, so people understand that better, but we didn't have that information available. So A is free flow, and C is severe, I'm sorry, and F is severe congestion. So from an impact standpoint, everything that's a level of service of D or better is considered all right, okay.
First of all, Michael Cato, great presentation. Thank you so much for that work.
One of the other questions in follow-up to the meeting that I had, which I know Jovan was not in attendance, was, is there, if we do close Scott Street and we leave that to just for pedestrian walk-through, is there a potential to open up an exit out onto Huntington? I know that neighborhood, you know, growing up in San Bruno and going into that area for a lot of different reasons, the old AT&amp;T building back in the day, I had a groomer over there, I've got a mechanic over there. It's always kind of an awkward neighborhood to get to, but definitely concerned about the safety as well. And so, that was sort of the thought process was, well, let's bring them in from Huntington into that neighborhood instead of now having to worry about either coming into San Bruno Avenue and going around. So that was a thought. It might even actually be an improvement to that neighborhood and actually get them out into kind of an area. And I would assume, too, that this project, or the success of it, is the joint connection with South City as well of San Bruno. So maybe there's, you know, exiting out onto Tan Fran, which can actually, Tan Fran to Huntington, maybe South City. I think that's kind of the property line between San Bruno and, so maybe we can work with them on joint measures in improving that intersection out there. That was a suggestion I had had. I was also concerned about the traffic study as well. And then, clarification. So is it true to say that if Scott Street is closed to vehicles, would the designs for South Linden not affect properties in San Bruno? Or is that not necessarily a true statement? Maybe, I see some nodding.
Yeah, if you're looking at considering a pedestrian under or over crossing, then at Scott Street, all of those, the property impacts could, are very minimal, and they would be the same for whether you did 1, 2, 3, or 4 from the Scott Street perspective. Obviously, they vary from, at the Linden Avenue.
But is there a potential that the grade separation at South Linden is, depending on whether it's going up or down, as it comes down into San Bruno, that it still will affect properties?
No.
Okay, okay, all right. And then, at the meeting, is it, maybe it's a clarification, was the, and Mayor Medina, you were there, was it, why was it, was it not talked about leaving Scott Street open and talking about either, you know, was that not an option, or was that not discussed? It was more about, it sounded like it was more about closing Scott Street, and that was more of the concern.
Yeah, so at the meeting, the attention was focused primarily on the four alternatives with Scott Street being closed to vehicle traffic. We did touch briefly on the issue of the property impacts and, you know, why we were presenting those things to them. We did not really aggressively solicit feedback regarding the opening or closing of Scott Street. I think part of that has to do with the fact that the task for the project development team is to develop alternatives for a grade separation. But I do think that at future community meetings, we will make more of an effort to have that aspect of this project discussed.
And I think that's important, because I don't want residents or property owners in San Bruno to think, well, wait, all of a sudden, I've been attending these meetings, and all of a sudden, now, this hasn't even been discussed. So I think we need to be clear upfront. And then, how are we reaching out to property owners in San Bruno to attend these community
So it was through mail-outs to the neighborhood in the vicinity. We mailed out to the entire 5th Edition neighborhood, as well as, you know, the commercial area that's to the east of the tracks in that immediate area. I will say that the, so for the second meeting, you know, some of the notices went out a bit late.
And is it safe to assume that it, the documentation that went out to the residents is, hey, you know, great separation, great idea, right? But does that, what does that really mean to them, right? I mean, you know, once we start talking about imminent domain or the potential of homes being affected by this, I think you're going to get more residents to show up. So I'm not sure how we eloquently include some sort of, you know, options out there, but, and I don't know the right way to do it, but I just, you know, what I hear from residents, and what they come to us and they say is, why didn't we know about this? Why are we now hearing about this when this has been, you know, a year or two in discussion, that we need to get out in front of this and get the feedback, so that we're not just having three or four residents show up to a meeting? Because this is, I think, if I lived in the area, I would be very concerned as well. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Irene.
I'd like to piggyback on what Laura was saying.
I'd like to piggyback on what Laura was saying. I'm concerned, too, about how we're addressing the residents and how they're learning about these meetings. So my understanding is the next one is in November for San Bruno?
Well, we haven't set a date yet. Earliest, it'll be in late, middle to late November. We're actually thinking probably more like early December right now.
Okay, so when you do set the date, I'd like, I want to make a couple of suggestions. One, don't put it close to Christmas vacation for the kids, because a lot of people leave, or Thanksgiving vacation. Two, when you advertise it, Nextdoor is a very powerful media now, and I think that should be added as, besides just mailing things out. I know when a lot of people get things from the city, unless it's a bill or a, oh-my-God notice, you know, they just don't pay much attention to it. So I think as, whatever social media you can use would be a good thing. I think this presentation you did was excellent, except that when you say affected, as the mayor and Laura both noted, it doesn't, people don't know that that means you may lose your house. So I think you may need to find some diplomatic way of saying that and maybe putting this as a link, at the presentation as a link on our own city website, because we'd have a thing about construction or, you know, proposed developments or whatever. So I think this might stir up a little more interest for your next meeting. Also, do you know where the next meeting might be? I mean, having it in South San Francisco for San Bruno people, I know you did a joint one, so you had both, but when you do the San Bruno one, maybe there's someplace close to the neighborhood that you could do a San Bruno meeting. Maybe there's even a place in Tanfran that, which is very close by, that you could do. So, and also, the other thing is, do you only put everything in English?
No, the first notices were done both in English and Spanish.
Okay, great. And the last thing, and I'd be happy to get some people to volunteer, door hanging notices for that kind of thing for the meeting, like the meeting is this, you know, next week, next week, please come, might be something else to think about. So those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Irene. Mari?
Well, I probably don't have anything to say, because everybody's made such great comments and a great presentation. That's what I had down here on the outreach, and since it's already been said. Nextdoor Facebook, a YouTube presentation of what you did in English and Spanish would be helpful. For community members, isn't enough. The scale from the pictures, trains are pretty big, and just that drawing wasn't to scale. So about how high would that pedestrian ramp be?
Yeah, and we had, at the community meeting, those are what we called our cartoons, but also at the meeting, we had boards that showed all four of those alternatives laid out in plan view, as well as with typical sections. So if, for a ped going over, you need a 10-foot of vertical clearance, plus there's about a five-foot of a structural depth there, so you're looking at, like, the railroad would be about 15 feet up in the air.
Ped going over?
Ped going, ped going under. Ped going under.
Right.
But when you, when you flip it, and then the rail, the ped has to go over the tracks, the clearance is significantly greater, because you have not only the tracks, but you have the electrification poles, and you need the clearance to that and the structural depth.
Right. So from what I understood, there were some good things about the pedestrian bridge. It's not a, we've had some bad experiences with our cars going underneath the tracks, and it gets flooded a couple times, so that would eliminate that. And the concern of safety in a tunnel, and I'll say it, it'd probably be full of homeless people at a certain point when it rains, it's just a safe place, you know, for people to stay out of the elements. So with those things said, and then the noise, if the tracks stay lower than, and pedestrians go above, I think that probably would minimize the noise and the amount of train traffic that we're going to be having in the future. So I also just wanted to echo what Michael said, the traffic impacts, you know, I think, I think a project of this scale needs to have a detailed analysis on the impacts to our residents as they're maneuvering around this. We are planning to have significant development in our downtown, so future impacts should also be kind of melded together of what, how that's going to impact traffic, and then we're going to be putting our downtown, and we need, how that potential is going to be, not just the current existing traffic. I also am in favor of exploring an additional access point to that neighborhood in getting to Huntington. It seems like this would be an opportune time to look at it. And I just want to make sure I understood, so impacted, is that pretty much eminent domain? Is that what this means?
Yes, that is a good clarification. So it's not that you would just lose your home, but there would be compensation.
No, of course.
Through the eminent domain process.
Right, and, yeah, the ways we can minimize eminent domain, avoid it as much as we could.
Yeah, generally, they use the term eminent domain when you can't come to an agreement to the, with the owner.
Okay.
And if you go into the right-of-way acquisition process, and you, you know, you come to an equitable agreement for both sides, then that process continues. It's only really when you trigger eminent domain is when you have a party that won't agree.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are my comments, so thank you.
And we also have a speaker.
Robert Riekel.
Robert Riekel, Seventh Avenue. I don't live close, and I think between the mayor and I, we were two of the four, and since I'm not really going to be impacted, I think the city has really got to reach out and get the San Bruno residents that are going to be impacted there at the meeting so that they can understand this. I was very ashamed that only three or four of us showed up, so you've got to, got to do something to, as Irene says, maybe door hangers or whatever, or put the presentation on two or three places online, or on YouTube or whatever, and get that out there where people can see what it may mean. Thank you.
Michael, thank you. Regarding the improved gate system that you mentioned, sort of in passing, are there examples out there in other cities of where enhanced gate systems have been implemented and have made a difference to the safety of the crossings?
I think I'd rather let Caltrain or AECOM answer that if they know.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Daniel Kraus with Caltrain. There is an improvement, I think they call them quad gates, so that's one technology that, it physically blocks most pedestrians unless they really make a big effort to get into the right-of-way. So there are things you can do. I think, like, the high-speed rail projects, looking at a lot of those for some of their grade crossings that would remain, you know, for that, but, so I don't know if there's any other questions related to that.
Now, just wondering, yeah, I was just curious, you know, if some of these other alternatives don't pan out, I was just wondering how successful leaving it, leaving it open at grade, if there was really some real benefit that could be gained by using a better gate?
I mean, the main issue you're going to face is Caltrain's planning quite a bit of an increase in service. We're working on a business plan right now, we're going to see, you know, that we're working on a service plan that could increase trains up to 10 trains an hour, or more than that potentially, so, and when in combination with high-speed rail trains. So the more, you know, if you have a crossing that remains, the more, the more trains that are running, it's, it means more delay for cars and just that much more risk for pedestrians.
Okay, thank you.
Question to staff, notices, were they sent out to owners of the properties or to the residents that live in the tenants, or the both, or how, who is notified and how? I mean, we know how it was sent out, but I mean, who is getting the notice?
They were mailed to the, to the address, the street address of the property. So whoever, I guess, whoever's living there was, would be the person who received it.
Okay, sure. No, so I just want to thank council for their comments on enhancing our outreach to the community. So message definitely received, and we will certainly do that for the meeting that occurs later in this calendar year, and utilize all methods that we can to really get out the word, get the word out.
Any additional comments, council? If not, before we move on to the next item, first of all, thank you both for the presentation. Jimmy, would you do us the honor of introducing?
Sure. We have one new member in our engineering team that's here tonight, her name is Haywon Ritchie, she's the new city engineer, came from the city of San Mateo. She joined us about early September, so maybe about five or six weeks, and she's still coming back here, so I think it's a good thing. And, yeah, definitely, you know, she brings a wealth of experience here, and then this is, we're happy to have her here in our city.
So welcome very much, and I know she was already at the Traffic and Safety Committee meeting on Wednesday, and I stopped by the office on Friday, and when I was at City Hall, and so, welcome.
Thank you very much. I've really enjoyed my time so far. The staff has been very helpful. Can we have you talk into the microphone, please?
Sorry, we didn't give instructions on that.
Thank you for that welcome, and I just wanted to say that I've, in the little over a month that I've been here, I've really enjoyed my time, the staff has been great, and they're very focused on their work and doing the best for the agency and its citizens, and it shows, and I'm happy to be a part of the team.
Thank you, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here this evening. Thank you, Jimmy. Next item.
Item 60, receive a presentation and update on the Crestmore-Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction Project, and provide direction to staff regarding the remaining trust balance and closeout.
So, good afternoon, council. Staff is here today to give you a presentation and an update on the Crestmore Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. We really thought it was prudent to give council kind of a highlight of where we are with project cost. A number of staff people have worked very diligently over the last month to pull together this information for you, and so I will turn it over to Harry Burrows, our contract project manager, for this project that will give, he'll begin by giving a little bit of an overview of the project, and then go into the detailed cost accounting. And then our finance director, Keith DiMartini, will talk about some of the options vis-à-vis the budget.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Harry Burrows, and I'm the city's project manager for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to give the city council an update on the overall Crestmore PG&E trust status. I will provide a brief overview and history of the trust and its components, as well as some detail regarding the projects that comprise the neighborhood reconstruction portion of the trust. I'll then turn the presentation over to Keith DiMartini, the finance director, to discuss the overall budget status. So starting with the review of the history of the trust, let's see. There we go. Obviously, the PG&E gas pipeline explosion and fire occurred September 9th of 2010. Shortly thereafter, you know, the re, the cleanup and reconstruction within the neighborhood actually began, initially with the cleanup of the lots where the homes burned down, and then the reconstruction and rehabilitation of the canyon area. That happened through the fall and spring of 2011. In March of 2011, the trust fund was established, the $50 million trust fund was established. In December of 2011, the city council confirmed the extent and scope of the neighborhood improvements for the reconstruction projects within the neighborhood. And then separate from the trust, in March of 2012, the city and PG&E agreed to a $70 million settlement for the establishment of the San Bruno Community Foundation, which is the non-for-profit. The expenditures against the trust were tracked against eight different categories. We show them here in descending order of magnitude. So at the top of the list is the Crestmore Neighborhood Reconstruction and Maintenance costs. These costs make up a bulk, bulk of the expenditures of the trust. They include the actual repair and reconstruction of the infrastructure in the neighborhood. This is where the true construction, you know, the contractors are out there performing the work. And the work included the water lines, sewer lines, storm drainage, retaining walls, slope stabilization of Crestmore Canyon, the replacement of curb gutter sidewalk, roadway reconstruction, new street light system, and a variety of other improvements. Also included in this category are the soft costs associated with the project, and these are things such as design, engineering, geotechnical engineering, civil engineering, water engineering, survey work, project management, construction inspection, materials testing, and other professional services, including landscape architecture, plan checking, and energy consultants. The next item is regular and contract staff time. And this category includes temporary and regular staff time to cover the additional workload that was required for the ongoing response and recovery associated with the event and the reconstruction. Then the third item on the list is professional services to assist and represent the city's interests. And these are legal and other services in both the federal and state proceedings, which included the NTSB and the CPUC, the negotiation, the negotiation of the various settlements with PG&E and the CPUC, and attendance and representation at legal hearings and other events. The remaining five categories on the list make up about 3.5% of the total expenditures. These items include fees that were waived for the residents in the repair or replacement of their homes, the management and trustee costs associated with the trust itself, the loss of funding on other projects due to the city's focus on the recovery and rebuilding process, community outreach and support to residents affected by the explosion and the fire, and costs related to the initial establishment of the San Bruno Community Foundation. So the actual reconstruction projects comprise, as I stated, almost 69% of the total expenditures to date. I wanted to briefly summarize these projects and provide a little bit of detail for each of them. So quickly looking at this map, you see in the, in the middle, the brown or orangish area, that's the Crestmore Canyon area that was damaged immediately after the explosion. There was slope stabilization work that occurred in there, as well as retaining walls to support the existing homes. And that was really the first item of work, the first reconstruction project that was undertaken. The next projects include the Phase 1 water and sewer, which are shown here in the red, as well as the dark blue at the top of the slide. Next, the area in yellow or bright orange there, that's the Phase 2 utility replacement, and that was the replacement of all the underground utilities in what we call the fire-damaged area of the project. Then after that, we undertook the Phase 3 utility project, which was the utility replacement in the remainder of the neighborhood, which is shown there in light blue. After that, we replaced about 300 upper sewer laterals within the neighborhood as part of the upper sewer lateral replacement program. And then finally, we are working on the current projects, which are the Phase 4 surface improvements, which is in construction now, as well as the Earl Glenview Park replacement project. This is just a listing of what I just described. So what I wanted to do was, you know, quickly walk through and just illustrate some of these past projects. This photos, or this series of photos show the Crestmore Canyon immediately after the fire, with the burned vegetation that had to be removed. The second photo there in the middle shows the slope stabilization work, including the hydro seating to establish, reestablish the slopes for protection. And then the bottom photo shows the retaining walls that were reconstructed and new retaining walls that were built to stabilize the upper portion of the slope and protect the homes. Again, the Phase 1 water and sewer projects, the sewer project involved fixing a pinch point within the main sewer trunk that went through the neighborhood. We had the opportunity to fix that shortly after the event. We had the opportunity to fix that shortly after the event. And then the Phase 1 Water Improvements actually involved the construction of two pressure regulating stations up on Sneethe Avenue, and what, what they do is they provide a little bit of redundancy and some reliability in terms of water flow and pressures to the The Phase 2 and 3 Utility Replacement Program, again, essentially replaced all of the water lines, sewer lines, and storm drain lines within the entire neighborhood. The Upper Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project, this project is the one that impacted the homeowners very greatly within the neighborhood. As you can see, we actually were on private property replacing upper sewer laterals, and not only did it impact them initially with the construction, but as you can see in the bottom, lower left photo, there's surface restoration work that had to be performed afterwards, particularly with driveways and walkways. So where are we today? You know, let's take a look at, at the projects that are currently in construction and the items remaining to be completed. So the Phase 4 Street Improvement Project is nearing its completion. The work completed to date out there includes, as you can see in these photos, subdrain work, new storm drain facilities where we actually had to cut the existing abandoned line 132, that's the top middle photo, the replacement of the entire curb gutter and sidewalks within the, within the neighborhood, as well as the reconstruction of the roadways. We recycle the existing pavement and repave the roadways. So that, that's all work that has been completed to date. What's left in the Phase 4 Project? We're about to embark next week on concrete valley gutters across the intersections. Shortly after that, we'll be doing decorative paving, stamped paving within the intersections. All of the intersections in the neighborhood will get a treatment that they'll end up looking like paver blocks in the neighborhood, and we'll have enhanced crosswalks. Then we got to finish the signing and striping, the replace and put up permanent stop signs and speed limit signs, as well as edge striping and centerline striping down the roadways. So as I described, when I was previously before this council here back in July, when we knew going into the Phase 4 Project that it would be challenging. At the last, as the last infrastructure project in the neighborhood, it involves some cleanup and resolution of some of the previous construction phases. Without going into too much technical detail, one particular challenge was that we could not build back the sidewalks exactly as they previously existed, because the existing sidewalks in the neighborhood built in the late 50s didn't meet current ADA standards. So one of our challenges was building them back to meet ADA standards. The, the new design had to balance the existing private property interface, the back of the walkway where we meet the private property and the improvements, with the new sidewalk and the road slopes. This has led to many issues that we've had to address during construction, including revisions to walkways, driveways, curb through drains, and other items. In anticipation of these issues such as these, a project contingency of almost $1 million was included when we approved the project, or when you approved the project. We still expect the final Phase 4 Project will be within this contingency amount. We're still negotiating change orders with the contractor and, and have some additional work yet to identify, but again, we're hoping that it will be within that $1 million contingency. So here are some photos within the last week of the Earl Glenview Park. As you can see by the photos, it's nearing completion. It's expected to be open later this month. Remaining items of construction include remedial corrections in some of the work that's out there. We've got some of the concrete flat work that's cracked and, and has, has some minor issues that we're making them fix prior to final acceptance. We've also got some plants that need to be replaced and some initial new planting that is, is yet to be done. One item that we have added to the landscape contract that wasn't originally in there is the cleanup at the top of the upper slope of Crestmore Canyon. So the, the work within Crestmore Canyon was previously envisioned as a standalone project, and what, if, if, many of you who have been on the council for many years remember that in the past, we talked about reforesting or replanting within the canyon. Based upon discussions with our geotechnical engineers and our landscape architects, they recommended that we leave the canyon as is. It's naturally revegetated, and native species have taken control, and their recommendation is to just, if we want to do something to the canyon, let's do something at the top of the mouth of the canyon. And, and so that's, that's the work that we're currently doing as a change order within the park contract. And that entails the installation of some live oaks along the back of the sidewalk at the top of the canyon, as well as a three rail wooden fence that'll go immediately behind the back of the sidewalk. There will be a gate down at about the midpoint, at the low point across from Earl, that will allow our public works crews access into the canyon to service the sewer manholes that are back there. And then the last item that I want to talk about here in terms of the reconstruction projects is the Upper Sewer Lateral Program. And so there still remain about 30 homeowners within the neighborhood who have indicated that they want to seek reimbursement for surface restoration work after the completion of their upper laterals. These owners have delayed their driveway replacement work until the city completed the replacement of the sidewalks in front of their homes. What they wanted to make sure they avoided was, if they built a new driveway, they didn't want us coming back with our sidewalk work and damaging their, their, their new work. So we're in the process of reminding these owners that now that we're near the end of the project, they need to get this work performed quickly and get their reimbursement request into the city. We're still carrying budget in the overall project to cover this amount of work for these 30 homes. So putting numbers to everything that I just described, you can see here in this chart that we have estimating budget cost to complete in two different categories. The major category is obviously the reconstruction and maintenance costs, the neighborhood reconstruction, and we're currently anticipating about $4.8 million is left to be spent on these projects, and that includes the Phase 4 work I described, the park project, and the Upper Sewer Lateral Program. In addition to that, there's some costs that the trustee and the city staff has identified related to the PG&E trust itself that still need to get paid out, and those total about $60,000. So as you can see here in the bottom right-hand corner, we're currently projecting that the total project cost will exceed the $50 million trust by about $1.4 million. So at this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Keith to discuss strategies moving forward.
Thank you, Harry. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. I'm Keith DiMartini, the city's finance director. Staff have been spending some time understanding the budget shortfall and where we're at today, and then we've developed some options for consideration about how we can achieve the gap in the budget so that we can come in and close down the fund and close this project correctly. So overall, just to summarize what Mr. Burrows said earlier, the total project budget was $50 million. It is estimated that the total project cost at the end of the project will be $51,406,378. It's an estimate at this time, based on known costs that the project management team expects to incur, so the total budget shortfall is just over $1.4 million, and that does represent approximately 2.8% above the total, above the total budget for the, for the project. In summary, there's, there's around three solutions that staff have identified to, to basically fill in the budget shortfall so that we can close this project out, and on this slide, I'll provide just a high-level summary, and the next slide, I'll provide a little bit of additional detail. About $100,000, we can directly attribute to the Fire Station 52 project that's in the city's fiscal year 1819 CIP program. That's the first solution. The second solution is $722,000. That's currently on reserve. That's associated with staff costs that have been incurred directly working on this reconstruction project. And then finally, there will, there will likely be some remaining funds in the Disaster Recovery Fund after the project is complete, and we can do a thorough reconciliation in that fund, and then being able to use some of the funds in the Emergency Disaster Reserve Fund. So those are the funding sources that staff have currently identified. So going into the next slide, just in a little bit more detail, as I mentioned earlier, there's approximately $100,000 worth of costs that have already been incurred that are directly attributable to the Fire Station 52 project. These include project management expenses or geotechnical consulting expenses, and so we would be able to basically record those costs directly against that project and not, not seek reimbursement to the trustee for those expenses. The next solution is $722,000 that's currently on reserve in the Emergency Disaster Recovery Fund. The city council did put these, did put this money on reserve in this fund a number of months ago, and so we would be able to leverage that money, which was directly and specifically for this project, in order to balance the budget shortfall. And then as I said earlier, once the project is 100% complete, staff will do a thorough reconciliation for all of the activity in the fund to understand if there's any remaining cash in there, and we will use anything that's remaining to cover the budget shortfall so we can also close the fund down. And then finally, the remaining amount, we are, we are, we have identified funds in the Emergency Disaster Reserve Fund that could be used temporarily, but will likely be reimbursed from legal proceedings that are currently underway, that the city would expect to, that would expect to receive. So overall, this is the sequence of events that we would use to correct the budget shortfall for the project so that we can close it down. And that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Questions, comments, or direction to staff? Mari, go ahead, please.
And thanks for those pictures that brought us back, Harry, when I was working with you on that slope stability and all the other interesting things of the first part of that So I'll get straight to the point. The last time this council heard from staff, I believe, staff was asked, "How are we doing? Do we have enough money?" And at that point, I believe the answer was yes, I think we have, we have the coverage. So I understand in construction, things cost more, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, right? We did a lot of work up there. The question is, from, from July to October, why 1.4 million? Is it just, how did, how did that, how did we get to here? I understand all the things we did, but when we, council asked staff last time, it was, we were going to make it. So that's my main question.
Why don't I take that?
See, ma'am.
So, council, in response to that question, I think there are a few things to consider. The recommendations that staff have developed to cover the 1.4 million that we're estimating the project will be over budget, part of the good news is that all of those sources will still come from monies that the city is expected, has received and is expecting to receive from PG&E. And so none of those recommendations involve retrieving or borrowing funds from a general fund pot of money or some other tax resource. So including the overage of 1.4, we are estimating that we can cover that from funds that the city either has received or is expecting to receive from PG&E. I think the other piece of the answer to your question is, we did a very fine-toothed accounting of all of the costs that have been incurred in the project and that are expected to occur through the end of the project, and our current estimate is 1.4 million. What we are not saying to council tonight is that there is a specific item or items that are causing the current projects to go over their approved budget, including that contingency. And so what that really means is that the totality of expenditures and projects that have been approved by council are over 50 million, and it's over by 1.4. And so I know that council, the last time staff came, thought that we would be able to cover it within the entire $50 million. Unfortunately, that's, that was not the case then, and that's not the case now. And so it, we are not coming saying, "Oh, something happened, we have to incur more money." The $51,400,000 are an accounting of everything that has been spent and had, and everything that is projected to be spent, and as Harry mentioned, for example, the road project, we are incurring additional costs, but we are doing that within the approved contingency. And so I think we are where we are, where to close out the project, we're looking at 1.4 million, but we have come up with revenue sources that really, at the end of the day, will have, came from PG&E.
I hear you. It doesn't change anything. My concern now is going forward. We're going to be building a $50 million aquatic center, and so what are we going to do different to make sure that we're tracking the costs appropriately so that we don't come into a situation like we just did? What are we, what are we going to do?
So you have the commitment of the staff that, specific to that Aquatic and Rec Center, we are knowledgeable that, yes, we are, we have the San Bruno Foundation committee committing $50 million to that project, and we are going to be laser focused on bringing that project in at or below $50 million, and we've, we're already having those conversations. Those conversations have started with saying, "Can we afford to build the second pool?" We're doing a fine-tooth analysis on that. And one of the things that if we think, one, either we can't afford to build it, or we, we don't think we'll be able to afford to operate, operate the second pool, we're looking into potentially not going down the path of developing construction diagrams for that second pool, because that can potentially save money out of that $50 million. In our initial meetings, initial, I'm saying, my meetings, the new community services director and the new finance director meetings with group four, we are having a number of conversations on the current budget for the, the current estimated cost for the Aquatic and Rec Center and what's not included. There are a number of things that are not included in the current budget, and that's including the relocation costs. Where will our recreation programs be in the interim? What, wherever we are, we will likely have to incur costs for that. So we are certainly doing that analysis right now, and where we are with that project is that we are at the 30,000-foot level, and we really need to go to one foot really fast, but we're taking our time and asking the questions so we don't have this situation again.
Do you imagine having quarterly updates, like maybe when we do the budget, to kind of let us know where we're at, where there are actually tables, and we can kind of have a better way of tracking it for ourselves? So you're going to be doing a different job, and, and don't get me wrong, you weren't here, and I don't think our finance director was there either, so we can't do this again, right? Clearly, you know? So I'm glad that you're focused on it, and we have to find a way to... I know it's not going to, the money's not coming out of, out of other funds, but that money was still there to do something else, other than cover a shortfall. My, my other question is, and for Station 52, so what actually was $100,000 spent on?
So there was geotechnical work that was undertaken to determine if it was even feasible, feasible to rebuild that fire station up there. It's located within 50 feet or less of the 1906 San Andreas Fault rupture zone, and so we undertook some geotechnical investigations to determine if we could rebuild a station up at that location. And that was a significant amount of money, including field trenching and peer review with outside geologists as well. with outside geologists as well.
Okay. For the Phase 1 water, if that improvement to our water system, that came out of the trust?
Correct.
Is that really an appropriate place for that to be charged to the trust if it really had nothing to do with the fire? Couldn't we take the money from our water system budget because it is an improvement to our water system, and it really had nothing to do with the fire? Would that be an appropriate way of allowing some more money in our Emergency Disaster Fund or Reserve Fund? It seems like, I don't know, maybe you guys can comment on it.
Well, I'm probably not the appropriate one to answer that, but just to add a little bit of clarification, those improvements greatly benefited the Crestmore neighborhood from the standpoint of, if you remember during the fire, the water pressures ran out very quickly because we didn't have the ability, the fire department didn't have the ability to bleed the water down from those higher-pressure zones into that neighborhood. And these improvements will allow the city to do that in the future.
So, it's appropriate, I mean, we could, it improved the water system. So, I'm just trying to, anyhow, but I'll take that answer, that's fine. I just thought, you know, depleting our recovery fund is... And so, where do we stand with those, with projected, where will we end up after this? How much money will we have left?
So, if you're referring to the fund that we're recommending that the delta come from, which is roughly 600,000, that is the Emergency Reserve Fund, and council set aside $3 million in that fund from money received from PG&E. And so, that fund currently sits at $3 million, and we would take 600,000 from that fund to pay this shortfall. And then, any additional money that we receive from PG&E would be deposited back in that fund to refill the 600,000 that we take out. If we receive more from PG&E than what we take out, we will ask council preference on allocating those resources.
Okay, thank you.
Michael? Irene or Laura? Irene?
Okay. Harry, it's been a long time. I know when you started this project, you thought two or three years at the most, and now, it's been almost eight years that you've been here. And I know the whole council appreciates all the hard work you've done. It was hard sitting at the beginning of this and looking forward to what we would end up with. It was hard sitting through all the different meetings we had and seeing the people who were devastated at the time, and they asked for certain things, and it was either hard or impossible to say no to them. And unfortunately, each of those decisions at the different, over the eight years that we made them, accumulated to the overspending that we have today. Fortunately, we did put money aside, the 700-plus thousand dollars, that was a good thing. Even the overrides, it's not even, I'm sorry, 2%, right? Is that what you said?
2.6%?
2.6%, which, for eight years of construction and added benefits and all the other things, there's nobody here who can say things didn't accelerate and cost more than 2.6% over eight years. So, you know, it's like half-empty, half-full kind of thing. I think you all did a fabulous job. Do I wish we had more money? Yes, of course, but we made the decisions, I know not the whole council, everyone was here, made the same decisions, but three of us were, the majority were, and we all said yes to maybe some things we shouldn't have, but we did. So, having said that, I know we're all looking forward to the end. I know the residents are cheering you on. And just, I also want to say, I appreciate when you added staff to your own to take care of the people who were up there, who were, you know, everything that they experienced, all the construction work added to their anxiety. And I know you had staff up there that helped alleviate that, and I really want to say I appreciate that. So, having said those things, I'll leave it.
To the chair, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the details. You know, it's easy to be Monday morning quarterback, right? I mean, it's to look back eight years later and say, gee, gee, we should have done this, we should have done that. So, I think, I'll echo some of Irene's comments as well in terms of the budget. Yes, it's over budget. It's unfortunate because it is a lot of money, and that money could be earmarked for other things that we could be using going forward. I guess the first question I have is, was there budget items for each of those eight items that were provided tonight? You provided a percentage of how much was spent in the overall. So, did each of those items have its own budget? And at what point, you know, do you look at like, hey, we're not, you know, four years into it or five years into it, we're exceeding the estimated budget for those items? So, and, you know, I think this comment and this conversation is more about going forward for the next project because, again, it's occurred. And I think, let's not all forget, this is a unique situation for San Bruno. We have never, ever been through a remodel and a redevelopment of an entire neighborhood. Another thing that this project has done in the work up there is it saved us a lot of money going forward. I mean, we look at budgets that we approve for sewer line projects that, you know, 500 feet, and it's a tremendous amount of money. So, that is a big win for San Bruno. You know, I think, Jovan, you made a comment when in one of our meetings, "Let's look forward through the front windshield instead of in our rearview mirror. Let's figure out how we can learn from this. Let's not do that again in terms of, you know, the..." I think we took on a lot more than we can handle, but we didn't know, and we went down this process. Some of the items here were kind of alarming in terms of cost, but I don't know enough detail about this, so I just want to say, this has not been easy. This is a sensitive situation. It put, like Irene said, a lot of residents in construction for the past eight years. Could you imagine that? I mean, when a neighbor does a remodel in their home, and you start hearing the hammering every morning at 7:00, 8:00, you're like, when is this project going to be ended? This went on forever and ever, you know? Residents dealt with the dirt and the dust and the road closures and this and that for a long time. At the end of it, it's going to be a beautiful neighborhood and a beautiful community. And so, I think that's, you know, that's the beauty of all this. And, you know, we can always do better, and we can always learn from this. But thank you for the effort, thank you for the presentations, appreciate it.
I think what you were also asking was to provide some direction. So, I'm going to, by consensus, I'm not hearing not to do the steps in which staff has presented, in which to balance the 1.4. So, Irene and everybody else made very good comments, I want to start to address some of them. Marty, you talking about moving forward, which is the right thing to say, and about looking at the project that is upcoming, making sure we get it right. And I will tell you that what was reassuring to me was, I think it was day three of the new finance director's day with the city, and he was already talking about it. Didn't ask him, didn't, but it was on his mind, he's already looking into it on, and I think it was, you weren't even there a full day, so we'll say 2.5. But that was already on the mind and in the conversation. And I know that I've talked to the city manager, you specifically were asking about quarterly, was to kind of keep council updated on a quarterly basis, not only on economics but on the progress of the development. So, we're all in touch, on the same page, and on track. To some of the things that Irene said, that is obviously something that neighborhood will not forget, many residents will never forget, or our staff that had to endure, and the residents, what they still do today. I'm hoping that when this does come to an end, and I'm hoping soon, that we'll look back and see some, as the former mayor would say, something good has to come of this, and whether it's safer things, whether it's a community aquatics facility. It's also, once again, I'll say, the courage and the patience of that neighborhood for what they've endured from that night until we're done. So, really, the resilience of this community and of that neighborhood especially continues to make me very proud of this city. So, does staff have direction?
Yes.
Go ahead. Anything else? If not, we will move on to comments from council members.
Mayor, we still have one item on the...
Oh, did we?
No.
Oh, Mark? I forgot. I was ready to let everybody go home.
Item 9D, review report and provide direction regarding amendments to San Bruno Municipal Code.
Sorry about that, I'd already checked it off.
All right, I think we're set to go. Thank you very much. Tonight is the first night of our introduction to the San Bruno Municipal Code, and I'm surprised that there's only a few members of the audience here and that not more people stayed to listen to our program to modify the entire San Bruno Municipal Code, all 11 chapters of it. So, we're going to talk briefly about a couple of things tonight. So, first of all, why are we doing this? Why should the code be updated? How are we going to update the code? And then, we're going to take a few minutes to look at specifically Title 1 and Title 2. Those are the first two titles of the code. Remember, there's 11 of them. So, we're going to go through all of Title 1 tonight and a little bit of Title 2 because that has a topic of particular interest. And then, we'll talk about next steps. So, let's take just a second and talk about why the municipal code should be updated. And I think it's fairly clear that we need a 21st-century code here in San Bruno. There's 11 titles plus the zoning code. The zoning code is Title 12, and that's going to be separately amended. You might have heard from staff, and remember, some of your study sessions about the updates to the zoning code. So, the difference between the zoning code and the rest of the code is that the zoning code has to first go to the Planning Commission for review, and then it's recommended to the city council. So, the first 11 titles, actually all of them, were really adopted in the 1980s, so that's about 40 years ago. And we've noticed as we've gone through the code over the last number of years that frankly, some of it's outdated, could be obsolete, there's a case law that might have changed it, and some portions of it are internally inconsistent. And of course, the city council also periodically adopts new ordinances, and those are brought into the code over time. But it's also important to look at those new ordinances and make sure they don't affect anything else in the code inadvertently. So, that's what the code review is really for, is to give you a full 21st-century code so that you can move into the future. So, the question is, how are we going to update the municipal code? And the first thing we're going to do, and already have done, in fact, is contact the code publishers. Most people don't know that the code is published by an outside entity. It's called Quality Code Publishing, and they will actually do an initial review, both an initial legal and policy review of all of the titles of the code. And so, they have already done that for Chapters 1 and 2 tonight that we're going to be talking about on an expedited basis. And they will do that for the rest of the code, and their process will be done in about three months. So, before the end of the year, we'll have a detailed review from Quality Code Publishing about all of the things that might need to be cleaned up in the code. So, once we have that, we're going to look it over, and we're going to review and recommend ordinance amendments, just as we're doing tonight, in sequence. So, we're going to do Title 1 tonight, part of Title 2. Next time, we'll come back with the rest of Title 2, we'll tackle Title 3, and so on. The trick with that is that many of those titles involve the work of other departments. And so, this is not just work of the city attorney's department, it's really a work across the entire organization. And frankly, that's the reason, one of the reasons why it's taken a long time to start out, because the organization is, I think we all know, is leanly-staffed and does not have a lot of, you know, bandwidth in other departments to spend their time looking at the city's code. I can do that, Quality Code can do that, or outside council can do it if we need help. But ultimately, these are the codes that are implemented by your staff, and so they have to be able to spend a substantial amount of time working on it. And I'm already working on Chapters 2 and 3 with the finance director and others so that we're looking ahead to those. So, the plan is to evaluate all those proposed amendments with our staff and outside legal counsel if we need some help with that. And then, we're going to use the standard three-step process for your review, which is going to be, we'll show you what those amendments might look like, make some recommendations, have you discuss them and give us some direction. Then, at the next meeting or subsequent meeting, come back for an introduction of the ordinance, and then finally, for adoption. So, are we ready? Title 1, the good news is, we're only going to go through the sections that are different. So, we looked through Title 1, and there are only seven sections that have proposed changes in them, and those are reflected in the first attachment in your staff report. So, let's just take a couple of minutes and go through those if you don't mind. So, the first one's easy, we don't have a JL, so we're going to get rid of that reference. The rest of the amendments are really to be consistent with state law. So, for example, 1.24, .020 is an amendment to be consistent with state law about claims. State law now has the maximum misdemeanor fine at $1,000 instead of 500. And it also provides for new additional fines for some health and safety code violations. So, we thought we would update those. We're recommending deleting a section that is a little bit archaic that authorizes citizens to issue citations. I don't think we really want citizens to be doing that. The city can't really control their activities, and that section, as far as I know, hasn't been used, at least not in the last, you know, eight to 10 years, if at all. One of the sections of the code, 1.32, .030, has an appeal time of things that aren't otherwise referred to in the code of 30 days. Well, mostly in the code, it's 10 days to appeal, like, for example, the appeal of a Planning Commission decision is 10 days. So, we recommend reducing the 30 days to 10, otherwise, you'll never know if your decisions are final until 30 days later, and you don't necessarily want to wait around for that. The other section on appeals that we made a modification in is to allow appeals to be heard at special meetings. Right now, your code says they have to be heard at a regular meeting, and that can really constrain your time and how you do that, so we'll have a little more flexibility. And then, the last suggestion is something that I would say came out of experience, and that is what we have found with development in the city and in other places, is that often, Public Records Act requests precede development applications and also follow development approvals. And so, the city is responding at its expense to public records requests that are really filed for pre-litigation reasons. And our code already requires, and our contracts with developers already require, that developers pay the cost of that litigation and reimburse the city for those costs. Doesn't cover the costs, sometimes substantial, of the city responding to Public Records Act requests. So, what we're proposing is that the code be amended to add those PRA response costs so that developers who have an approved project, and now the city is getting a bunch of Public Records Act requests relating to that project, that the developer has to pay those costs if the city incurs costs in responding. And we had a substantial number of public records requests, for example, for the hotel project and for other projects, we expect, and the more development there is, the more of those we're likely to get. So, that was a change that we're recommending. So, that takes care of Title 1. And so, now, moving to Title 2. And there are about just five sections of this code that we're recommending changes in, and let's just go through those briefly. So, the first several of them are really just amendments for consistency with state law regarding notices of special meetings, notices of closed sessions, and notices regarding elections. And if you don't mind, I want to pause for just a second on the notice regarding elections because this is something that was somewhat bedeviling in past election seasons. So, the code was written to specify a location for your city council meeting that no longer exists at a time that the meeting does not occur at, and within a week... exists, at a time that the meeting does not occur at, and within a week of the election, which is before the county gives us the results. So we really had to do gymnastics and backflips to try to figure out, how are we going to get city council meetings scheduled and comply with the code? And the answer was, we really couldn't. So we ended up finding some workarounds, and perhaps the city clerk will be pleased to know that we've come up with what I think is a workable definition in our code about when those meetings will occur. Under state law, the county has to say what the results of the election are, canvass them within 28 days, if it's consolidated. And if it's not a consolidated election, they have to tell us what, or we have to have the results by the Fourth Friday after the election. So that's what the code is proposed to be modified to now. It also allows that the canvas of results by the city council, as well as the selection of officers for the following year, can be done at either a regular or a special meeting. That was a problem we ran into last year, as you might remember. So we tried to clean that up and make sure that it provided the most amount of flexibility while giving the certainty that's necessary when you have the announcement of election and officers. So that was really the main change that we made to that section. And then lastly, I want to focus on a section which involves the selection of the vice mayor. So, right now, the selection of the vice mayor is done by a rotation process, and that process is that council members or vice mayor who have not served as mayor or vice mayor, or who otherwise served least recently. So it's sort of a reverse order. And the effect of that is that, for example, council members who are newly elected, such as Council Member Davis, congratulations, are by that rotation required to be the vice mayor for the following year. In most other cities that we've surveyed, the city council exercises its discretion each and every year to select the vice mayor. There are some alternatives, however, and we want to spend just a couple of minutes going over those, and then I'll turn it over to Council Member Salazar, who has done some research as well. So one alternative is you could leave the system in place the way it is. The advantage of a set rotation system is that there is no discretion, so there's usually no debate every year about who the vice mayor is going to be, as opposed to most other cities, who each year have sometimes a robust and healthy debate about who that individual will be. On the other hand, you could decide to do that, you could decide to make that decision annually, and that's consistent with what most other cities do. However, what you could also do is adopt a different rotation system. And so for example, you could look at, instead of reverse city council tenure, you could flip it, for example, and have it be that the most experienced is at the top of a rotation, and then it goes down. So, the result of that would be that the system would be a rotation, and there is one city we were able, actually Council Member Salazar was able to find, the city of Oakley, that apparently does it that way, and I think you'll see at the dais, and we have available for the public, the city of Oakley ordinance on their rotation system. And then Council Member Salazar also has at the dais there for you, and we have for the public, a proposed ordinance for the city that is actually a little bit simpler to understand than the Oakley ordinance frankly, and that would also work here. So before I turn it over to him to explain that, how that would work, I only want to mention one thing about timing, and that is that if you were to give direction to modify the ordinance in any way, that would normally come back to you at the next meeting for introduction, at the following meeting for adoption. However, the ordinance isn't effective for 30 days, and that would be after your first and only meeting in December, when you appoint new officers for the following year. So you do have a couple of alternatives. One thing you could do is keep the current ordinance in place as it is for the 2019 rotation, and then just go ahead and adopt the new ordinance if you wanted to, so that would be effective after 2019 for 2020. Or you could schedule a special meeting to introduce your new ordinance if you wanted it to be effective right away, and you'd have to do that before the 17th of this month. So, I'll turn it over to Council Member Salazar, but just briefly, the next steps are to provide some direction about Title I and Title II. Do you like those changes that we proposed? Confirm for us, if you don't mind, the timing and schedule to complete the review of the remaining titles. We think it'll take about 24 months, could be a little bit longer, it's hard to know. And then if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And now I think Council Member Salazar has a couple of comments.
Okay, so first of all, I apologize to my colleagues for the lateness of getting this particular document out, and I think the one we want to focus on is the single page with very tiny writing. The second, the second two-page document with the larger writing is an actual copy of the city of Oakley's language. But in a nutshell, the proposed language that I was able to glean from the city of Oakley and a few other cities that I looked at, would basically create a ranking system similar to what we have now, but it takes each member's tenure into account, ranks them based on their seniority, and it does account for a potential tie in that seniority by saying that their position on the ballot at the time of their election would determine who goes first. So it makes it very unpolitical, it takes away the, any potential for, you know, controversy that has occurred in other cities in selecting their vice mayor, and I believe it puts it in a more predictable and more fair fashion. You know, and looking in the past couple of years, I know that Irene's been bumped twice, and so I think this would address it. And also in Mark's other point about, you know, when it could be adopted, so if we adopted it for 2020 being the first year, I think Irene would still, in either scenario, be the next in line to do it. So she's been already bumped twice, so she would finally get her opportunity to do it. This really does guarantee that everybody gets a chance to do it within their tenure. So I think it's a little bit more fair, and should, I mean, does anyone have any questions on how it would work? I'm hoping you all had a chance to do a quick read, it's actually the last paragraph on that page that really gets to the meat of it, so I don't know if there's any questions or concerns on that.
I don't have a question. First of all, thank you for doing all the research and finding this a very elegant and fair solution. The very first time I served as vice mayor, I was excited, but totally inexperienced, and barely could figure out what next steps during an agenda, so that was an interesting experience. I think this works best, and I appreciate that, I really appreciate the rotation. I've experienced from other council people the difficulties in choosing or not choosing, and the personalities that come out, and everyone suffers, there's no good solution to that, so I think this is, as I said, an elegant solution.
I think it made perfect sense the way it currently sits. No, I'm just kidding. I remember saying to the mayor, "What? Don't ever be sick." So I definitely, Michael, I appreciate the comments. I guess maybe the only comment I have is maybe is if the rotation, I mean, I don't know if this would be, but a member not interested in taking the role of vice mayor due to personal issues or something like that, that they could skip that? Does that need to be said, or is it, they could?
Yes, and I believe the Oakley ordinance has that type of provision in it.
Looks good.
I absolutely agree. When you're first on council and you're vice mayor, you're like, oop, I turned it off, sorry. So yeah, I absolutely agree. Thank you. Thanks, Michael.
Mark, was there anything else?
No, there's not. If there aren't any questions about the rest of the ordinance ordinances.
Okay, so let's see from council if there's any additional questions, since we commented on the vice mayor. Michael?
So Mark, I was curious, do we have an option in our municipal code to be less specific rather than more specific, and what risks are there in that? So, when I look at things where we say that we're going to do things on a specific day, or we identify that, you know, our meetings have to occur at a specific address, you know, for a lot of cities, you know, that they have their council chambers in city hall, probably not a big deal, but you know, we're up here at the senior center, hoping maybe one day in my lifetime I'll see a new council chambers built, but I'm not holding my breath. But if we need flexibility, is there really a need to be very specific in terms of addressing those things?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the answer is yes.
Before you answer, because I want to include something I was thinking, is, you know, we talked about what if we wanted to hold a council meeting somewhere else? And I brought that topic, I know you could say, well, you could have a special meeting, but let's say we wanted to go into a neighborhood, or we wanted to go into different parts of the community. Really, that specifics, I think, precludes some of that. And so anyway, that was just a, thank you, Michael. Yes, go ahead, Mark.
So normally, with respect to regular and special meetings, and we can have the clerk weigh in on this as well, state law does require that those, that there be meeting times and places specified in the code. And the reason for that really is for the public to be certain about when and where those meetings are going to be located, so they know that they can go to a particular place and there's going to be a meeting there. As opposed to, you could imagine, a city council, not this one of course, but others, who might choose every single week to hold a special meeting somewhere in a different location all throughout the city, and nobody could really ever keep track of where that might be. So it's sort of an absurd result, but that's actually the reason for the rule. So where we have flexibility, I understand what you're saying, we'll try to include it by saying you could either have a, you know, regular or a special meeting, and we've had, of course, special meetings at city hall, but we'll look and see if there's any way to have that be more flexible. And I don't know if you have any more comments about that.
No, he, the city attorney is correct, that state law does say that for regular meetings, our code does have to specify the dates of the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month, and the location that the meetings will be held at, so that's why this is very outdated, because it has a different place. And this would specify, for now, the senior center, and then of course, when we get those chambers that you're dreaming about, we can update at that time to indicate that new location.
And then just to quickly follow up, you can certainly, you can hold special meetings at other locations, and so that's the flexibility that you have to do that. It's just that you can't change your regular meetings around to have them be at some arbitrary number of locations.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had was regarding the section around council member salaries, and it seems to indicate there that, you know, based on changes in population, that our salaries will be adjusted, and it says that they shall be changed. And I know that we, as a council, have never implemented that, we've stayed stable, I don't have a problem with keeping our salaries where they are, but it does seem that when the language says that that's going to happen, and then we don't do it, and we're kind of violating our own policy there. So that might be an area where we might want to soften the language, saying that we, that that would be our opportunity to do it, but we're not actually required to? I'm not sure.
Right, you're not required to adjust those salaries as the cost of living goes up, and I believe this council has declined to do so over the years. You're not required to decline. You can decline if you want to by not acting on it, and that's what this council has generally done.
Okay. But do you agree that the section where it says that, you know, that the Department of Finance placing the city in a population group, blah, 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 that it automatically triggers a change, and maybe that, is that required to be in there, and then we just overrule it, or how does that work?
Yeah, actually, the population group is, I checked this, is 35,000 to 50,000. And so once it's within that band, it's the same. It's only when it would increase above that, that it would trigger that, that do rule.
Not likely.
Not in our lifetime.
Not in our lifetime. Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Other questions from council? Comments? Marty?
For on this item?
Yeah.
Oh, good. We've got it covered, it's good stuff.
Thank you so much.
Mark, do you have enough?
Yeah, that's plenty, thank you very much. We'll bring this back for introduction at the next meeting with Council Member Salazar's suggestion, and if there's a consensus with Council Member Davis's suggestion that the proposed vice mayor can decline if he or she wants, and then it would move to the next person in the rotation.
Yes.
And is there any question about the timing of it, or shall we just bring it back regularly at the regular meeting and have it effective in 2020?
Are we okay, just to keep it on path?
Yes.
To 2020? Yes, 2020.
Okay, very good, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Now, we will go to comments from council members. Irene?
Nope.
Laura? Michael? Marty?
Yes, I got two, one short one, real easy. You got this in the mail, it's, there's going to be a pumpkin patch on Saturday, October 20th, located at Berkshire Hathaway, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at 180 El Cabo, and you get to pick your own pumpkin, one per child, have a photo taken on the patch, and a complimentary barbecue while it lasts. It's a lot of fun, I've gone to them for the last couple of years. So that's on the 20th. And I wanted to share a Facebook exchange that I had with former council member Ken Navarro, and Ken was mentioning that, you know, when he's not on the council anymore, he just doesn't get information. And it's interesting that tonight, we were talking about using Facebook and Nextdoor to kind of increase the, increase the community awareness of what's going on. And so, I think, I know staff is really, really busy, but I'm hoping that we can maybe ask for some volunteers, or people that are really interested in being involved with that. I know other cities have public information officers, I'm hoping that we can kind of do that with the staff that we have. Putting posts on Nextdoor are pretty easy and quick, and the Community Services Department does it with events, the Police Department does it. Just hoping that we can look at other things that happen around the city and using social media a little bit more. And I wanted to commend our city clerk, Melissa Thurman, for her outreach in enabling people that want to get agendas, whether on any of the boards, commissions, or council agendas, all you have to do is contact Melissa, and she'll put you on an email stream, so that you'll get the agendas in advance, so you know what's going on in our city. So with that, we did have an important meeting on September 11th about communication on our council, and how we're trying to improve things. Unfortunately, only one person showed up, that was Mr. Rico here, he comes to everything. So it's a way for people to be involved, but you're going to need to take a little bit of a step towards us to get the communication. So our first way of doing that is with Melissa, so there you go.
Okay, if there be nothing else, then we will go ahead and adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held here on October 23rd at 7:00 PM. Everybody enjoy the rest of your week.
Thank you.